Is it working?
Good, and I can-
We are going to get started.
It looks like it's going to be illuminated. Are you planning to come kind of back before the board for that piece?
The tenant is to take care of that.
Okay.
So I don't have the answer for that. All I know, what I'm doing is we're re-landscaping everything. From the sign all the way along the right-hand side, all the way up to the back of the building.
Okay.
Make it truly keep it a mowable type of grass. Redoing the island in the road.
Okay.
Trying to aesthetically make the place look like what it should look.
Yeah, I like the live-to-pickle, but I was just curious about the illuminated sign part.
I can answer that for you. The tenant, that's up to the tenant.
Okay. Has anything come before?
So you and I had talked about this earlier, and now that I'm thinking about it, if they're using the existing light box, and although it hasn't been used for over 10 years, probably longer than that, so it would, if they needed a new sign permit, it would come, it would need to come before the board, and we should be notified.
If it is internally illuminated.
If it's internally illuminated, we'd come before the board.
It was when it was in agreement.
Well, but you don't know what the tenant is wanting to do, so yes.
Yeah, so I can, I can talk to Kevin about that, the building inspector, because, yeah, if they, if they need a new sign permit, we're notified, and then it's determined whether it's internally illuminated or not, and needs to come before the board.
Okay.
All right, any comments or questions from the public? Okay. I will, I'll accept the motion.
So, Moshe Dru would approve the site plan for Seven Lewis Lane. Kevin.
Thank you.
In terms of further discussion, but we want to just make sure that we, we make it, that we get the light pole on there with the dark sky. That's, we're all in agreement on that, right?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Do we need, Stephanie, do we need to change the motion to do that?
You can say with the conditions that-
With the conditions stipulated. I amend there.
And we have amended second?
Amended second.
Okay, great. All right. Well, then, let's, let's have a vote. Kevin?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Ziggman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. But-
Thank you.
Good business.
What did I love to pick up for this key?
It's very important.
Okay. Next up is the public hearing at 531 Foundry Hammerhead LLC.
You got some interview?
Yep, please read us in.
All right, let me get to it, sorry. Okay. Town of Easton, notice of public hearing. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 41, Section 81T MGL, the Eastern Planning and Zoning Board will hold a public hearing on Monday, September 16th, 2024, at 6:30 PM at the Easton Town Hall, 136 Elm Street, and remotely resume on the application received from Hammerhead LCC for a special permit multifamily under the Easton Town Code, Chapter 2235, Zoning 235-56 Special Permit, Appendix A2, Special Zoning Districts Table of Use Regulations, Principal Uses A, Three Multifamily Dwellings to Allow Residential Apartments at 531 Foundry Street, Easton Lots. Accessors Map 44U, Lot 37. The virtual meeting link will be contained within the posted agenda at least 48 hours in advance of the, of the meeting. Copy of the application and the plan may be viewed on the town website.
All right. Thank you. And who will be presenting tonight?
I'm Gary Bonicki, Hammerhead LLC. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Nice to see you again. My engineer, Peter LaVoy from Landmark, was, had an emergency meeting he had to attend to. He said he was going to sign on by Zoom, and I don't know that he's on, so.
And you guys notified us beforehand. Isn't that, so do we?
They sent it in.
You guys sent it in. You know what? So if you would like, we can table this. Maybe we can take the architectural review-
Oh, yes.
First, and then we'll go out of, out of order and bring you guys back up.
Sure.
Is that your preference?
If we could get them on board, sure.
That, that, that's fine.
We're fine with that.
That's fine. All right, so we'll, we'll table this for now. You can leave that right up there.
I'll give you a call, I'll see what kind of-
See if you can, yeah, if you can find out that, great. Of course. Okay, so we'll table that for a moment. Next up is the architectural review for 20 South Street, Old Forge Commons, Flexible Development. And then there's also the request for the change to plan, having to do with the cul-de-sac and the stone wall. These ones, I think everyone knows that I've been recusing myself on this one, so I'm gonna step out of the room, I guess, and turn it over to Mickey.
All right. Do we have?
I've promoted, yeah.
Okay. I'll do my last spot.
All right, I'm in there. Hi, guys. Good evening.
Mr. Humphries? Do you have a presentation for us, or?
Yes, I do. So what we want, which is on for first? Because I have three items on there.
Let's do the architectural reviewer first, and then we can move to the next few.
Sure. So you'll see, we have five houses coming up. One of it isn't affordable. So we have lots two, four, seven, 17, and 19 are the houses that are coming for architectural review. I already met with Alan. Thank you, by the way, Alan, for coming out so quickly to do the meeting on the lots for the tree clearing. So that's out of the way.
All right, did you want to put the plans up on the board? Or were on the screen? Or if not?
Suzanne, I'm unfortunately extremely old, so I don't know how to do that. So Suzanne usually throws them up there. And you're gonna save, you're gonna save me as usual?
I wasn't prepared to do that.
I don't know how to do that.
You can see on your computer, you can share.
I don't, I don't know how to do that.
Do you have the documents up? There's a green button that says share, and then you click that, and then you click on your-
Okay.
Where the architectials are.
All right, so I got, so go to the, do what now? Go to the green button, okay? Did that. Oh. I don't know what that did. I don't know what I just did.
So it'll prompt you for, give you a bunch of different choices on your screen?
It will show, it will show what's open on, it should show what's open on your screen, and then you click. I'm assuming that you have the architectural-
I do. Yeah, I have them all ready to go, but I'm trying to see. It's on the bar. I have YouTube, stop video, participants chat, share screen.
Share screen.
All right, share screen. All right, there you go. Okay, hold on one second. All right, so let me see. So now, which one do I go to? Do I go to file? I go to files, hold on. And I'm gonna go to, yeah, I'm gonna get my wife to help me here. Hey, Kat? You help me with this here? Bear with me, guys, sorry. So I did, it doesn't matter, I can bring them all up, but why does it have Dropbox here?
No, you don't.
Yeah, but I don't want, I-
All right, come on.
So I have them on the desktop, so. So we're gonna go to desktop, desktop, there we go. Yeah, you just had it. There you go, desktop. Okay, and then we gotta go to the side over like this maybe.
No, I, come on.
There you go. All right, so, no, down here, down here. So these are the plans right here. So we got-
Which one are we doing first?
We're doing, do 19, right there. All right, is that up there, guys?
Yeah. Yeah.
Right, there we go. So this is 19, she's gonna have to help me through this. So this is lot 19, and it has everything that you guys want to see. Has the, calls up all the siding, calls up the roof shingles, calls out the roofs, calls out the elevation of the proposed dwelling, 29, I think that says 29, eight for the elevation. So you can see on the front of the house, has a typical, sorry. So the garage doors, you'll see, we have nice garage doors, all four over one, which we've been doing in all the houses in there. Has the metal roof that we do in there. And you'll see up above, we throw in a little board and bat, like we've been doing in the houses in here. This one has some nice lines to it. So that's lot 19. If you guys have any questions, just fire them at me. Here's the right side elevation. So on all the side elevations, we just go with the typical vinyl, the four, the four-inch standard seam vinyl siding that we go with. But you'll see all the windows are four over one. This house has a pretty cool, has a deck up on the primary. You see off the primary has that, that's pretty cool. And here's the, here's a rear elevation. You see the deck on the back of the home.
How high is this house?
29.6. And that's the other side elevation. You can see that's metal roof, so that's standing seam metal roof. Shows the aluminum gutters. And all, you see these lights here? These are all, all the houses in here, I do the same lights over the garage doors. I supply them, and they match the street lighting, which is a nice concept that we're doing in there. So that's, so that's a floor plan, you don't need to see that. So that's 19. Now we go to the next guy?
Let me ask the board members, do you have any questions on lot number 19? All right, let's, almost, okay.
No, I wanted to say, it's all the drainage to the front of the house. The house is up high, right?
I'm sorry, honest, what'd you say?
I'm trying to figure out how high is the base of the, of the house from the, from the front.
We usually keep them up about a foot and a half to two feet above the street. Not much higher, because the water table's down deep.
I said no. I'm using the magnifier.
Yeah, so the, what's fortunate in here, we have a very low water table. The water table in the north end of the subdivision's like nine feet, and so it's great. We don't get any water in the basements. We do, you know, we have, the gutters are all buried, and we do French drains and all that underneath the floors. But even with all the water we got this past winter, not even the French drain, the drainage pits didn't even get water in it, which is great, so. Yeah.
I was asking this because the elevation of the, of the house is important, but the elevation of the house itself also is important, depending how high is in relation to the abutters and everyone.
So this house here, I can pull up the engineering if you want me to do that. It's probably, the house is about 55 feet off the street, and the front of the house is probably about two feet above street level.
Yeah, that's good. I haven't seen it.
Yep. Have you guys, so Alan was in the subdivision just last week when we did the walk-through of the trees. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to go in there. I know Stephanie's been in there. But I wish the planning board would go in there, because this is something that the Town of Easton should be proud of. The subdivision is beautiful. It's absolutely beautiful. You know, these are houses that, I'm not right now grandstanding or anything, but you got houses that are 1,800 to 2,500, some are a little bigger. But, you know, with the lots at a 130 acre to a half acre, these lots are fantastic. The houses are gorgeous. It's a beautiful subdivision, something we could be, all be proud of. And I've done, I don't know how many dozens of subdivisions in the Easton, but this one is special. It's a good one. So let me close this and go to the next guy. So that was 19. We're gonna go to seven, which is sort of the same floor, same house layout. Hold on. Yeah, there we go. This house is a smaller version of that. Same sort of lines. A little different in the garage concept, garage doors, et cetera. So this is a front elevation, right side elevation, rear elevation, again, four over one windows. This is something we do a lot of. So you see, there's a fireplace in the home right here. And what we'll do is we'll do these three-by-two windows on either side of the fireplace, these awning windows here. And then on the inside, we do built-ins on either side. It's, and you know, some, again, you're in a subdivision that are one-third to half-acre lots, and in your living room, you want some privacy, so you go with a window that allows light in, but you're not looking at your neighbor. So we take that into consideration. So this is lot 17. I'm sorry, seven, rather, I'm sorry, seven. This is lot seven. This house is about 2,300 square feet. And I'll give you the elevations of the, hold on, let me give you the height of that one. Give me one second here, guys. So this one here is 29.8 also above the ground, above elevation. And you can see the nice detail we do here. So you got the metal, this one here has metal roofs over the garages, where these are asphalt, where you can see my cursors over the front door. So this is asphalt, asphalt here. Then we do some nice moldings here. So these are little brackets that come out, just give it some nice Carolina flair. It's a pretty house. And most of the front doors, I only do three different, what I did in the subdivision, I went with three different front doors. So I have, this is a three-quarter glass floor, so it's a floor pane. And then I give them the choice of also doing a more of a country-style door, which is up high, it'll be two panes of wood, and then up above, I'll have four windows. And then I also have a three-quarter with, it's like a 16 pane that I do. But that's all, so I'm trying to keep that same country feel. Like, again, all of our houses in here have the farmer's porches with a nice trim. So that's what you see here. So this is number seven. Any questions, let me know, and I'll continue. Just let me know what you want me to do, guys.
All right, board members, any questions on seven?
Nope.
All right.
All right.
All right, we're good. Want to move on to the next?
All right, so that's 19.7. This is 17. Oh, I'm sorry, wait a second, I'm sorry, that's, this is four. Sorry, wait a second, hold on, I got the wrong lot here. I did the wrong one, hold on. Bear with me here. Who wants that to that? There we go. I have to close that, hold on. All right, I gave you the wrong one, hold on. Yes, okay, this is lot number four. This is lot four. So this is front elevation. Let me give you the height of the building, hold on. 27 feet, eight inches. And again, you see the flare with the four over one windows, this front door, the four. And then you'll see the metal roof over the garage doors. And when I do the front porches too, this is what they look like. So we do, all of the front boards are Trex, so everything's no maintenance. I mean, this is all, all these where the cursor is, this is all PVC. Windows all have PVC trim. And then this here is all PVC, Trex stacking. And then what we do underneath here, where you can see that, that's, that all there is like a, it's a board and bat, like, it's half-inch-thick PVC, which gives it a nice peel, and you don't get the animals under there, and it's all poured concrete under this, so the animals don't get in there. But it gives it, it's nice. It's not, you don't see just pressure-treated, you see all this completely finished. And again, these are the window, these are the, I should say, these are the lights that I put over every garage door. Every one in there has the same light. And then I give them the choice in the carriage house doors. Some of them are double-cross, single-cross this way, some go in the other direction, some are four windows. So I give them all that different choices that they do on there. And you can see here, this is a nice water table in the front. Let's go on to the other. So that's a really nice farmhouse look, that's what we're trying to create in there. So here's the right side elevation. Again, you'll see these awning windows for privacy in the living room. And here's the rear, so this is the rear of the home. So what I, you'll see here, there's no big deck on the back of the house. So what I give the people an option is they have a choice of either doing a big deck or they can do pavers. And if they go with the pavers, they can go with the larger area. So I offer them a deck that's like 16 by 12, but if they go with pavers, I can give them an area 16 by 22. So a lot of the people will go with the pavers. And it's, and again, high, low water table, so this is how it looks. So you have two steps out of the house, and you do a nice patio out back, gas grills, we plum for that. It's, it's pretty nice what we can do out there. So that's the rear elevation. And here's the final side elevation. This is the garage side here, that you see here. And that is lot four. Do you guys have any questions?
Yeah, it looks like this unit is a lot closer to the neighbors than the rest of the units.
Lot closer to the neighbors?
Yeah, to the other houses in the lot.
No, not at all, not at all. It's right in line with lot three and lot five. It's the same frontage setback. And in the backyard, if you look for the neighbors, you don't see them. There's probably, Alan, you were out there, you saw the tree cutting lot four. When we walked there, you can't even see the neighbors in the backyard.
You won't remember that, but.
Yeah.
You're just, it's just there.
The house wasn't there, so. I, I saw the stake foundation, I think, Bill.
Yep, but you can see, we're only clearing what was there. So initially, back last year, I did a walkthrough with the previous chair, and because lots three, four, five, and six, because of the elevation change in the back of the house, because some of them are half walkouts, we got approval to clear, clear back about 100 feet off of the street, so we could bring fill-in, which we did do, that, and we did, went over that. And then, just recently, I just met with Alan. We got a clean like about another 25 feet back behind the house. But you can't see any of the neighbors in the backyard. This, you can't see them. They're 300 feet away.
It's more towards the front of the house.
I think it was, there were trees on the lot lines-
Yeah.
Separating, providing a buffer.
Yeah.
If I remember this lot.
So I'm, I'm, I'm talking to you addressing privacy of, you know, it's a, it's a very, but it's a high-density neighborhood anyways, but if something can be done to address privacy, it will be here. This house is the one that, at least looking at the drawings.
Well, the neighbors are, neighbor to the right and the neighbor to the left are approximately about 70 feet away. I don't understand your question, but there's, this house, this lot's a very private lot. It's, they have nothing in the backyard you can see, and the neighbors right in the lot, they're 70 feet away. It's, it's like a regular convention.
Because of the shade, the backyard is not a problem, but it's like a slice, so the front is a lot smaller.
So the front yard of the house is 50 feet off the street.
Yeah, I can remember.
Which is not much. I can bring up the engineering in two seconds. Can I bring up the engineering?
No, no, it's not necessary. I'm just, I'm just asking you to take a look at privacy and addressing that.
So in the neighborhood, when I go in there, I'm gonna be treeing all the front lots. Everybody, all the lots are getting trees in the front, going through the subdivision when we get it, when we get to that point, which will be this coming spring. And as you guys, the board members, know, we started the first houses last year in May, and we've already got 14 houses up, and we're getting ready to start these five. So this winter, we'll have 19 frames up, and we're not, we're not, we're still four, five, we'll be four or five months from even being two years, and the subdivision will be almost complete. So in the spring, I will be bringing in, doing the trees, going through the road. I'm not doing it now, because there's too much construction going in there. So if you go into that subdivision right now, there's 60, 70 people working there every single day. It's, that's how we work. We're in there like a machine, trying to get this thing done, and it's going well, but I, I, if you have concern, please come in and meet me in there. I just, I don't see any issues with privacy or whatever in there. It's, this is, this thing is a, was well thought out from the very beginning. I, I think it's a great plan. But if you have any issues, please come out and meet with me. I'll talk to anything about it, what you're talking about. But I don't see what you're, it being a concern right now.
Any other board members, any comments? I think the issue of privacy can just be kind of noted.
Sure.
Just making sure that every neighbor in the area has, abutters and whatnot have privacy. Do we want to move on to the next one?
Sure. So this is four. Give me one second. So we did 19, seven. Correct me if I'm wrong, did we do 19, seven? What did we do, 19, seven, and four?
Correct.
Did we do? Did we do 17?
Not yet, you've got two and 17.
Okay, let's, yeah, yeah, let's do that. Okay, 17's coming up. So 17 is a ranch, small house. So this is one of the smaller homes in the subdivision. This one's 1,700 square feet. Let me go to the front elevation. There you go. So the height of this house is 20 feet, nine inches. Has a metal standing seam over the front farmer's porch, carriage house doors, board and bat over the garage. It's a ranch, but we like giving it these eyelash treatments here, so you got the little double mullion and over the front here, it looks nice. This one here has the four-over-one front door. So that's front elevation there, farmer's porch. Right side of house. Let me just bring it down. So that's right side of house there. This one has a deck on the back. Again, the awning windows in the living room for privacy. Rear elevation is here. These plans, a lot of these houses have come before you. I've done, I think, six or seven houses in here so far, that the people do this here with the 10-foot sliders, it's pretty special. They love it. It's off the living room. So that's rear elevation. And then final left-hand elevation, so this is a garage door. And this right here is, is, so that's the primary bedroom right here. This is the primary bathroom. There's another bedroom here. And this is actually the stairway to the basement. We put light in there, which is pretty nice how we do that there. So this one here is like, this one, again, this is a smaller home. Here's the footprint of it, just to show you what, let me just show you this here. It's pretty nice what we do. So we, I always do oversized garages. So the minimal garage size that I do in here is 24 by 24. That's the inside dimension, 23, 23. So I go 24 by 24, so you can put two pickup trucks in there. And you come in through the front door, you got a bedroom here, full bath that feeds that bedroom, and another bedroom here, laundry room here. And this is what's nice about these homes. This is what people love. Look at the, look at this room here, guys. Kitchen, dinette, living room. It's 32 by 16. And then off of this, so this is a- And then off of this, so this is a, older couple that's retired bought this home. They got their master bedroom, primary bedroom right here. Off of that, big walk-in closet. Big bathroom. I make, always do custom showers in there. So it, it's really a pretty cool. We've done already three of these, sort of like house plans in there for, it's for like the empty nesters, I should want to say, but we've, it's a really popular plan. We've already, so lots eighteen, which we're closing on Sat, on Friday. Five and six are sort of mimicking this, this house plan. That's the basis they went off. The retirees love this plan. It's a nice house plan.
All right, board members, any question on seventeen?
Just to curiosity, Bill, is, is there a room over the garage?
No, no, no. We just, so it's a, so you're building a ranch. And in the subdivision, I'm doing all ten pitch roofs. So ten pitch roofs are very expensive to build. And when you do that, you're creating this big giant roof, which is sort of ugly. But on the other hand, it makes the house look like it's a cape. So that's why we do it. So, no, there's no room up there, up there at all. And it's not that much ceiling height. It's probably, like, you could put a room up there that's probably twenty-four by eight. But it's, why would you do it? It's just, it's just a look. And that's why we also do this here. There, you see where the cursor is here. So we put that dormer up there and it's just for look. But it's, it's a, it's a ranch. But it looks like a cape. It looks bigger than it is. It's pretty, it's a nice looking design.
So that dormer just lights the downstairs room like a?
Doesn't, lights nothing. There's not, it's just attic. It's attic space.
Oh, okay.
Yep. And with, so with the new, because we're, we're stretch town. We're stretch town. And being a stretch town, the typical insulation in the attic is an R sixty, which is twenty inches of insulation. So even if you have two by tens up there, you still got another twelve inches of insulation above it. So you can't do anything up there. It's just enormous amount of insulation. It's, but you know, not to bend you guys' ears, but I know you got a long night. So I lived in the subdivision. I'm in here. I'm sixty-four Old Forge. My house is twenty-five hundred square feet. And with all this stretch code stuff, my heating bill in the winter is about a hundred and eighty bucks. And my electric bill in the summer with two air conditioning units running on two floors is about, and I have three refrigerators. I have a refrigerator drawers, refrigerator in the kitchen, one out of the garage. My electric bill is about a hundred and sixty bucks for a twenty-five hundred square foot house. So this hers stuff is pretty amazing.
All right, thank you, Mr. Humphries. Can you show us lot two?
Yep, you got it. The last, I take up your time, guys. All right, so this here is, this is the affordable. It sort of mimics four, but it's a smaller home. So it has the same roof line here. Let me get you the elevation. Hold on one second, please. All right, so that is twenty-four feet, eleven and nine sixteenths. Unbelievable, eleven and nine, so it's twenty-four, twenty-five feet high. The roof pitch on this house here. And farmer's porch again. Coachman doors for light window here, four over one windows. You can see here, we got the board and bat and siding. Now just keep going to, not to hold you up. So this is the right-hand side. Rear elevation. And the left side elevation. And here's the layout for it. So this is a small, this is a smaller affordable. This is the three-bedroom, not the four-bedroom. So there's, it's a really nice plan. So you come in through the garage, living room, dining room, kitchen, all that open concept that everybody loves. Then in the front, you have a den office, half bath. Go up to the, I'm sorry, hold on, second floor. Come up the staircase here. You have a large area here hallway. You have two bedrooms in the back, full bathroom. And this is the primary here. It's a really nice floor plan. Somebody's going to be very lucky owning this home. And that's, so that's lot two, guys.
Board members, any questions on lot two?
Oops, went the wrong way.
Stephanie, does this need a vote or?
Yes, yep, the board needs to vote to approve the plans.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the architectural review?
Motion to approve the architectural review, Kevin.
Second.
Second segment.
She could have it.
All right.
Yippee.
Okay. Kevin?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigmet?
Aye.
And Wolf is an a as well. All right.
Take, only one more, only one more.
Now we have you, the change to plans. Stephanie, would you like to do that next?
That's fine. I will let Mr. Humphrey explain what he is proposing.
Yep. I gotta figure out how to make my screen bigger. Hey, Ken, need help? Sorry, guys. So right now, your screen is over on the right side of my computer. It's only like two inches by five inches. And I don't want to hit the wrong button, I'll lose you guys. So what do I do now? I gotta make the screen bigger. That's the mute button. It's muted me.
Can't just go to that?
No, I'm still muted me.
No.
Guys, can you hear me right now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay. Is it that one there, the nine bars maybe? The big bars there? Oh, how about this one up here? Right here.
What's this right here?
Don't do that one, that'll, how about the arrow right there, that arrow?
No.
All right, all right, all right.
So what are you, what are you trying to do?
I guess, all right, it's, oh gee, hold on. Ah, it's a small screen. Can you guys see me okay?
We can see you. Are you trying to share a plan for the cul-de-sac for the?
Yeah, I'm just, my screen's minimal. It's, I can't.
Can you, can, is there a way that you can take his permission away to share?
I'm, I'm sorry, why do we want to take away his permission?
Oh, I'm sorry, now just started, just having, stop sharing, sorry.
Oh.
Not take away permission, but stop sharing. He's just trying to make the screen bigger, I believe.
Wait, wait, I figured it out. Hold on. Yippee. There we go. Hold on, almost there. Yeah, I gotta show them pictures of, I didn't, I didn't download those pictures. So I might have to at the next meeting. Guys, I didn't, no. Oh, the subdivision?
The pictures.
Oh my bad, he wanted to share. I'm sorry, I thought he was trying to stop sharing.
So we can do it at the next meeting, guys. I, I know you're busy. So I'll do it at the next meeting if I can continue, because I didn't download, I didn't download the cul-de-sac picture. So can we do it at the next meeting?
I don't see it in the binder.
I have the cul-de-sac letter. I just don't have any images to go along with it. Okay.
I don't think I did the pictures. I don't think I did.
I mean, I think the letter's pretty self-explanatory if you want to discuss it then.
Yeah.
Yep.
I mean, I think, so basically, my understanding is that the plan was approved with granite curbing around the cul-de-sac. And Mr. Humphrey would like to instead do a Cape Cod berm, which is the rolled asphalt.
Okay.
So you, you see it everywhere. And it would seem that that would be a reasonable request, considering the granite curbing is certainly used a lot more in streets that are more heavily used. A separation to sidewalk. This is really just within this cul-de-sac, within the subdivision, so.
Can, can you explain what, what is a road?
It's so, I miss, when you see a road that the side berm is not granite, but it's that rolled.
Asphalt.
Asphalt, yes, it rolls up in.
What does, will do that to the drainage, anything?
No, it, it should still redirect it because that, the edge should still be located in the same location that was part of the roadway plan.
What is behind the road? Is there, is it dirt?
It will be filled, it's filled with soil, with, yes, with earth.
It's just like.
Right?
Rolled asphalt.
Yeah, can I?
Granite stones sitting on top at an angle.
Yeah.
Stephanie, can I go, explain why I had this? So a lot of subdivisions that we've done in town, what'll happen is with the slope granite, which is basically, it's not vertical granite, it's slope granite. So it's a, it's like a three-inch piece by eight-inch piece of granite. And when you're doing it around a circle, so this is a smaller, it's still a league, it's, it's still a good, it's an adequate size circle, but it's smaller. It's the, it's the smaller size that the town will allow. And the road's only a twenty-foot road. It's very tight and it's a winding road. And as I said in my letter, even though we like it like that, because it keeps traffic flow down, people don't speed because the road's so windy. But when the big trucks come in here, the Amazon trucks, the trash trucks, et cetera, and they come around that winding road, they misinterpret their angles that they're doing and they keep driving over the cul-de-sac, the inside part that's going to be landscaped. So we're going to be mulching that. I'll probably do like four foot of grass around it, then mulch in the inside of that and then bushes, et cetera. Can't put trees in there because the fire department doesn't want that. In case there's ever fire, they're going to drive through, they don't want to hit a tree. But the problem that when the cars come in there, they're going to hit the granite. And when a circle is that tight, what happens is the slope granite, you have to cut it like in two-foot lengths to make that angle, because it's so tight. And you only put, can you put concrete behind the seams? So every two feet here is going to have a blob of concrete and then it's going to be dirt. And when you hit it with your car or vehicle, it's going to knock it over. And water's going to get in and then the plows are going to knock them over like Donimoes. So I figured if we went with the Cape Cod berm there, which still pushes the water to the drainage properly, it just, they can't hurt it. And since it's a private road, we, the homeowners, are going to be paying for fixing this granite all the time. And I really feel it's going to be an issue. Bill, doing this for forty-one years, I just, I noticed this, I didn't come before you with this. I just came for you now because I'm noticing all the trucks coming around the curb are driving over that berm and they're going to knock them all over. So I just think it's smart planning that we do Cape Cod instead of the granite, because I really feel it's going to end up in somebody's front yard.
All right, thank you, Mr. Humphries. On board members, any other questions? Joanne, you're all set?
Yep, I'm good.
All right. Do we need to make, to vote on this change of plan?
So what, what I think Mr. Humphrey is asking for is an insignificant change, a determination that this is an insignificant change to the plan and that the board vote to accept a revised plan showing. I would strongly suggest that the plan be revised to show the Cape Cod berm instead of the granite curbing.
All right.
But I think the board could vote to determine that it's an insignificant change.
Do I have a motion?
So moved, segment.
To determine that this is an indeterminate change.
All right, and revised plans to show?
Revised plans to show.
All right. Weeks, a second.
Kevin, second.
All right. Rocco, Kevin?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigmet?
Aye.
And Wolf is an a as well. All right. We're moving on to the stone wall. Mr. Humphries, do you have anything to present to the board on this?
I downloaded photos to Suzanne and I screwed it up, but she helped me. And she, I'm sorry, not downloaded, uploaded. She always tells me I don't know what I'm talking about. So I uploaded them and I did that wrong and she uploaded them. So do you guys have those or should I go hunting for these?
We rock photos in the binder.
We have them as part of our binder. Do you wish to provide kind of a narrative to go along with them?
Yes, yes, please. So when I built the subdivision, there were farmers, we, we call them farmer's walls throughout the subdivision. And there's one that was on the front of the property, on the west side, that ran up the property line. It ran all the way up to the driveway. And when we built the subdivision, we obviously had to remove the farmer's wall to put the road in. And then we have to remove more of it to put in telephone pole, sidewalks, utilities, et cetera. And then the last twenty feet, there's a drain manhole cover that, or in the pictures, that's right up against where the tree clearing is. That has to be exposed. You can't cover up a drain man cover because if there's a problem, you can't get to it. So one of the neighbors said to me that it was a historical wall and it should be preserved and put back up, et cetera. But that's just that one wall. What about all the other walls that are through the subdivision that I had to remove? All the other farmer's wall. There's a farmer's wall, if you look in the plan, you'll see farmer's wall going between lots nineteen and twenty. There's other farmer's walls that are running through all, throughout the subdivision that I had to remove to re, to build the subdivision. But all of a sudden, this one wall, he's the neighbor and he's saying it's a beautiful historical wall. So I've had board members out there and shown them the wall. And it's like, they're just rocks that are sticking, like sometimes you'll see two rocks, one rock, no rock, then three rocks, et cetera. And I don't see any significance to it. It, yes, it is on the plan, but so aren't all the other walls that are in the subdivision. Should I, I'm not being a wise guy, but do we want to build all those other walls that go right through the road in Old Forge? Or is this determined as being a farmer's wall? Now, the farmer's walls are all throughout eastern. They're not historical walls, they're farmer's walls. It's what the, they delineated their properties to do that. There's literally tens of thousands of feet of these things through eastern that are everywhere. They're not any historical significance, they're farmer's walls. So if I had to rebuild some of these rocks, all I can do is rebuild like about six feet till I get to that drainage manhole cover. And then the other area, I gotta fill all up because it's low. And the, if you look at the plan, it all supposed to be filled up, which I wanted to do. But what I'd really like to do on that wall there is I'd like to landscape that area and then I'd like to put in some nice trees going along that as a buffer. So the new homeowner that buys has a buffer, so they're not looking out onto South Street. That's what I'd like to do and that's what I intended to do. But if, if you guys feel that I need to throw some rocks back on the ground there, that's, I'll do it, but it's, it just doesn't, I don't, I don't see it. It just, it just don't look right and I can't put it on top of the drainage covers. So what am I going to put in? Come out five feet to the drain manhole cover and then put fifteen feet of more rocks? It just, it doesn't make sense. And it's, one of the butter just keeps on telling me the farmer's wall and showing me pictures of a horse and, and I just, I don't know. I want to be, I want to be a good neighbor, but I don't see it being historical. So I've had members out there. And that's why I wanted to come before you guys. I want to put this to bed, guys. It just keeps coming up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Humphries. For board members, any comments before I turn it over to the public? Alan, yeah, you had a, do you have a chance to make a site visit?
I did.
Okay.
I, I think Bill's correct in that there is a sewer drain cover directly in line with where the wall would be that can't be covered over. The existing wall terminates about maybe five or six feet from that sewer drain, which will have to be, you know, left for access. So if anything, it would be a fairly short section that could be reconstructed. And I don't think it would look appropriate to then, you know, leave three or four feet and then continue the wall after the drain. I don't think it would look right. When I went to see the wall, I, I didn't notice the long section of the wall that went down the street. When I went to see the, the wall, I, I didn't notice the long section of the wall that went down the street. It's completely overgrown with ivy and all kinds of underbrush. So I, I don't know who was maintaining it. Some of the photos make, you know, made it look like it was a, you know, nice country wall. But I couldn't see a wall much past where the demolition had been taking place. It was all just covered with ivy and whatnot.
Thank you. Yes. So we're going to read that, we request to read that in? All right. Before we go on, Joanne, do you want to comment now or just?
No.
Okay. All right, so before we kind of open this up to the members of the public here, we do have a letter to be read in. One of the voters would like to read this in because they're not able to be here tonight. Do you want me to read it in or? Can it just be moved to be read in or what is the best way to do this?
Is it in the packet, is it this letter right? I thought I saw it, hold on.
Yeah, says, please accept this email in our absence. I respectfully request this letter be read in this meeting in our absence.
Okay, would you like me to read it?
I can, I don't mind if you want me to do it, I don't, I don't care. All right. Maria Wilson specifically asked in a planning meeting on July 11th, 2022, at 1:23:57 in whether the stone wall in question would be disturbed. Greg Strange responded live on the Zoom call, preservation of the wall would be a condition of the permits of approval. I asked, did the board make the permit conditional or not? Whether, when the wall is replaced, how was weathered appearance be addressed by the contractor? It's important to note the many existing historical stone walls in and around the neighborhood project project a distinct feel and ambiance that cannot be replaced by common Eastern white pine trees as the contractor stated is his intention to use in place of the stone walls. I also want to emphasize residents of the area have taken it upon themselves at expense to maintain the village's historical charm, including landscaping integrity of the area to their, of their own volition. Replacing the walls also acts as a needed visual cue for drivers not to miss the turn in the road as distracted drivers currently do on a regular basis. An obvious safety issue currently exists with distracted drivers missing the turn with many children playing in and around the intersection. In closing, we find it very disheartening the contractor has attempted to choose this path and we once again ask for your support. An additional issue, the attached footage shows the property line wall damage adjacent to the Old Forge Commons Drive and 16th South Street. The developer damaged the wall over one year ago and would respectfully request to be repaired this fall before the stones are lost. Thank you, Maria and Rob Wilson, 16th South Street. All right, I'd like to add, any members of the public wishing to speak? If you come to the mic and, oops, I'm sorry.
I have a sharing.
Okay. Mr. Humphries, could you please stop sharing your screen?
Uh, how do I do that?
Suzanne, I think you can do that.
Oh, I got it, I got it, I got it. I see it up the top. There you go, sorry.
If you could please identify yourself, name an address, please, before you begin the presentation.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. A resident at 21 South Street since 1993, so well over 30 years. I, as you know, I've submitted a detailed letter with photographs outlining the possession. It's been signed by 14 folks from the neighborhood. And I wanted just to address a little bit first, just about the chronology of how we bring ourselves here today. I endeavored to get this issue resolved so it wouldn't require any involvement of the planning and zoning, but the, those efforts were unsuccessful. I'd like to direct your attention to the plans themselves that were submitted, the endorsed plans as approved by this board. They actually show the stone wall on the property borderline, right in that area. So in other words, on the plans that were submitted, and it's pages two and seven, and I can pull it up if you like, I have it here.
If you could, yeah, if you could please pull them up because we don't have them in front of us.
Right.
Thank you.
So you'll see on this, I believe this is page two of the plans. There's a table on the bottom that identifies, I'll zoom one more time, that identifies the oblong circular shape as being the existing stone wall. And as you'll note, it's actually shown by their surveyor as being on the property line. So frankly, I don't think that the applicant has any right to remove those in any event, separate and apart from the conditions and so forth, because it's actually a on the property line, just as I don't have the right to remove stone walls in my backyard where it identifies the border of the property line with my neighbor. The, on pages two and seven of the plans, it actually shows this as the, you know, if you look here, this is showing on page two, the lot itself. And then I'll scroll down to page seven where it actually shows the house lot on it. One moment. And on both of these plans, it shows the existing wall remaining. In other words, there's no reference nor was there ever any approval sought to actually remove any portion of the stone wall for, for any purpose, frankly. And here we show, I believe it's, it's page seven of 17. And on this one, again, you can see it's lot one. And again, so it's actually showing the configuration of the house and again, still showing the existing stone wall remaining. And that's what was approved by this board. But first and foremost, it actually shows that by their surveyor with their plans, the border of the property is actually where, you know, running right through where the stone wall is located. So I would submit, separate and apart from the other reasons, that this stone wall cannot be removed, but unless the town were to agree to do so, because it is on the borderline itself. Secondly, the plans themselves, as one of the conditions of the, this board's decision was that any change to plans must be submitted to the planning and zoning board for approval. So separate and apart from the issue of the stone wall being the actual borderline, it would require a vote of this board to approve any change in plans. And we would argue that this would be a material change to plans. Through the, many of these board members here were not present as part of the permitting process. This has been going on for a number of years. Our neighborhood was very actively involved with this. And I want to just play for you briefly just the audio of what was referenced in the Wilson's letter of the actual hearing that took place in, I believe it was July 11th, 2022, in which the question was asked and which the statement was expressly made that the preservation of the stone walls was a condition of this permit. So I'm just going to play that so you can hear it directly.
So my next one is the stone walls. I just want to, the stone walls that surround the Buckley property currently are beautiful. They are covered in shrubs and trees and I want to make sure that those stone walls are going to be preserved.
They are, that's a condition of the approval.
Okay, my next one.
So that was Mr. Strange, who was the chair of the board at the time. And in the letter, I provided you with the link where you can find the actual ECAT recording of that meeting. And if you go later, and I can play it as well, but it takes a few minutes. But if you go later, it actually was stated that when the board voted in approval of this, of plans, it was on the basis of all of the conditions that have been stated during that hearing were to be adopted. Now, I would call it as a lawyer, a Scrivener's error, but some of those, that condition did not show up in the actual written decision. I actually asked that this board amend its decision to reflect that condition so that not only this stone wall must be replaced, but also for the surrounding stone walls that they not be removed. And I'm not aware that there were, I hadn't been on the back of the property before, but I was not aware of other stone walls that may have been removed. But frankly, if they were, they don't show in the plans.
Point of order, please, point of order?
You can't, if you'll please wait just one moment, Mr. Humphries, you'll have a chance to speak. We're going to let Mr. Carister speak.
All right, this is regarding the same plan that he's putting out on seven of seven, of plan seven of 17 that he knows of another stone wall.
Just one minute and let Mr. Carister speak and then I'll, I'll give you an opportunity again, please, okay?
Thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carister.
So the next part of the chronology is on March 30th, 2023, I came, came home from work and was frankly horrified to see that all of that portion of the stone wall had been removed without any advance notice and to my understanding, without any advance approval by the town to remove that stone wall. And I understand some portion of that stone wall may have needed to be removed in order to construct the drainage easement, but there's a 15-foot wide drainage easement there. So there's no reason why that drainage easement had to be placed in the area of the stone wall. Secondly, but it is what it is, I would note that that area was used for a number of months as an actual primary access to the site when they were doing work on the road. So there were trucks traversing back and forth on that. I reached out to Ms. Danielson, you know, on the following morning and had an email exchange with her. And in my letter, I, I referenced the, what that discussion was and I just want to read for a moment the email that I received in response to the one that I sent in March 31, 2023. It said approximately 40-foot feet of the wall, it has been permanently removed just to accommodate the sidewalk at the entrance of the subdivision. And just separate and apart from that, I have no problem with it. I understand that needed to be removed in order for the, the road and the sidewalk. But then the email further said, the portion removed beyond that is temporarily removed to accommodate installation of the portion of the drainage system tying into the existing public drainage. And this email was copied to Mr. Humphries and I didn't receive any further communication with him. I don't know what communications took place between Ms. Danielson and Mr. Humphries surrounding that. But we understood, consistent with what had taken place at the public hearing, is that that portion of the wall would be in fact restored and replaced. And thereafter, on June 13th of this year, I worked from home a fair amount. So I'm right in that corner, looking out over that area. I saw that they were performing some jackhammering of the rocks that had been piled near that area. I don't know whether that included the, the rocks that had been part of the stone wall or not, but I asked that the stone, that the jackhammering stop until this board could weigh in. That process continued. As far as I understand, those rocks that were part of that historic wall are long gone. And I would say, my understanding is that stone wall was put in likely in the early 1800s when you look at the age of the surrounding homes in the area. And as far as I know, those rocks, you know, are, are no longer there, notwithstanding my request that that jackhammering and removal stop until this board had an opportunity. On July 26th, I also reached out to Mr. Humphries asking that we have an opportunity to speak directly and I gave him my availability. He acknowledged receipt of the text message, questioned who it was from. He said his contacts had been deleted. I confirmed, but my offer to discuss this directly was ignored and didn't receive any response. So I'm asking this board to require, Mr. Humphries, to restore that portion of the wall. And it's not just five or six feet, it's running from where the wall now terminates because of the remaining part and all the way up to where the sidewalk would be. It's probably more like 40 feet, if not more, that needs to be replaced. And I'm asking for the following reasons. Number one, it's a border where the town should not have been removed for that reason. Number two, it's on the plan, showing that it remains and any amendment to the plan would require this board's approval. And I would request that the board not approval, not approve allowing that wall to have been removed. It was expressly stated also to be a condition of the permit that all of the stone walls would be removed. I, you know, whatever's taking place on the backside of the property between certain lots, I, I, that's not my concern. What my concern is that portion of the stone wall that immediately abuts South Street, that is such a crucial and important part of this neighborhood. This was a beautiful historic stone wall that somebody back in the 1830s or so, you know, put up to demarcate the border of their property. And it's endemic throughout Eastern, it's important. I want to show a few pictures, if I may, to direct your attention. So this is the area and you now look and you can see the, the sewer area there. That, this should not be driving this decision where they opted to put that right, right over here. First of all, by my viewing of this, the stone wall can, can, can come and pass without going over that manhole cover. Second, if it can't, it should just be a little jog in the stone wall and going around. And it should run all the way up to the point of where the sidewalk comes in, which we understand is on the other side of where this utility pole is. And the utility pole was placed where it was because it was necessary in order to provide sufficient access for the sidewalk that will run up along the, the entrance into the, into the neighborhood. I wanted to show you what this stone, this is not just a matter of a pile of rocks. This was an absolutely beautiful stone wall. This is what it looked like just a few years ago. That's my fence, it's looking, you see the turkeys here and so forth. And you can see the same mailbox in the distance and you see what this wall, this was a substantial, beautiful, historic stone wall. And frankly, it's a shame that it was removed and that those rocks were not at the minimum preserved so that they can be restored with a historic patina for those, for those rocks. Here's another picture taken some years ago and you can see, you can see the, the stone wall running again. Again, your pointer reference, the mailbox is here and you can see the stone wall going back. I personally, actually with Mr. Buckley's approval, had actually maintained this for years and years. I, I cut the grass again with his permission in this area here and, you know, make sure he didn't have any problem with it. And the town periodically would do its trimming as it periodically does in order to keep that. To the extent that it looks like it's overgrown now, well, that's been frankly during, you know, the, the current owner's ownership of it. That's not how it typically had been before. This is another view of what it looked like and how, how beautiful it was. Yet another view, this was, this was and always has been a very important part of this historic neighborhood, part of the Furnace Village area, you know, a recognized historic area in town. Now, I want to just direct your attention to some other pictures taken on the street. So as you'll notice in the letter, so this is just allowed down a little bit further. So in this view, you're looking north on South Street. So 106 is behind me when taking the picture. Up in the upper corner on the right-hand side is where the, the property is. And so this is a stone wall that was, you can see it looked like. On the, immediately to the next to it, on this part of the property here, which is part of Fran Masters' property, yes, is the stone wall some, just some rocks on the ground and everything? Yes, that's accurate. And some of the pictures that were submitted by Mr. Humphries actually are not on the part of showing his property, but actually were on the part of Fran's property.
Dale, just to give you a heads up, I'm just going to give you about two more minutes just because I want to have everybody have opportunity to comment.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm almost done.
All right.
But let me just show quickly some of the other pictures. This is on the opposite side, looking towards Route 106. And again, you can see the stone wall on either side and with the old pillars there for the entrance. This is looking from Pecanicket and you'll see a stone wall on your left. There's also one on the right. This is looking towards the development in the back. This is looking from, with the property to being developed on my, my back. This is close to my driveway and you can see beautiful stone walls on either side. That's what this area is all about. Stone wall is pretty much running almost the entirety of South Street and on occasion on both sides. You'll notice also there's a stone wall that this was referenced in the Wilsons on the development side coming in. So in other words, this is the border with Mr. Wilson's property. And so having a restoration of a stone wall will be consistent with the look that they have there in any event. Mr. Humphries said, you know, he would, he would abide by this board, see if they wanted him to put it back. We're, we're asking that the board do that. And. And when I brought this issue to his attention by text message, I think this was on June 13th, when the rocks were being removed, the response I got is, "Unfortunately, it's my property, and there's nothing in the order of condition saying a wall has to be reconstructed. I'm installing trees on my property, and I don't want a crappy-looking stone wall there." This is not a crappy-looking stone wall, it's an important part of who we are in, in Easton. It's historic, and frankly, I view ourselves as being stewards for these types of things, and historical resources and preservation thereof is one of the reasons we, that is referencing the purpose for the flexible development to begin with, and shame on us if we let this go and not requiring that stone wall to be replaced. I would further note that on the issue of trees or stone wall, you cannot put trees, I understand, because of things, on top of where you have the drainage there. I, I'm, I'm not an expert in this area, but my understanding is you can't plant trees in that area. It doesn't need to be an either-or, it can be both. And I love the fact that wants to put some trees in there. When I found out about this development three or so years ago, I started putting trees in to put my own privacy buffer. It's not his obligation to provide a buffer for me. So we would ask that if this board hold Mr. Humphries accountable for being a good neighbor for this area, and require that the stone walls be replaced and running from the, for where they now terminate after having been removed up to the point where the sidewalk would appear. And we also think frankly, the board should, in light of the scrivener's error, should modify its, and have a corrected decision to reflect that the stone walls cannot be removed so that this doesn't happen elsewhere around the property, that other historic stone walls, for example, on the border with the condominiums are not removed as well. Thank you very much for your attention.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carister. Before I open it up to any of the members of the public, I did, I did, I apologize, Stephanie, I didn't give you a chance to comment earlier. Okay.
I have nothing to add.
Okay. Any, any other members of the public wishing to speak? You please go to the mic and just give your name and address.
My name is Justin Lee Winter, I live at 479 Bay Road, I'm the owner of the oldest home in the town of Easton. These stone walls are cultural heritage, they are one of the largest public, well, not public, they're used as public boundaries for now, but they were one of the largest works projects right after the revolution. These things are historically significant in multiple ways, there's hundreds of thousands of miles of these, and I am originally from Long Island, New York. Almost the entirety of 18th and 19th century history in New York has been decimated, and I moved here to Easton because it was very good at preserving your history, and I was fortunate enough to buy a piece of that history. And unfortunately, if you start piecemealing it, it'll all be gone within two generations. Just like when the first colonists came here, every single tree was gone within 50 years. So if you can do your piece to save this, you'll save it for future generations, because not only did colonists build this, migrants and immigrants built this from all over the world, and it'll be gone, and your children won't see it, your grandchildren won't see it, and it'll be a shame, it'll be quite a shame. I'm fortunate enough that I live in Southeaston, and I'm in a historic district where these things are kind of more protected, but I asked the town that with, where this is, that it be rebuilt. It just cannot be, once it's gone, it can't be rebuilt, unfortunately, to what it was with the missing patina on the stones. And I also asked that you ask Ed Hands and the other people in town, like the Town Historical Society, Historical Commission, to look at it and make their determinations, and I hope you can furlough them, that's all.
All right, thank you. Mr. Humphries, I'll give you a chance to speak in just a moment, I did promise that, but I do want to see if any, any other members of the, please come up to the mic, you name an address.
I'm Fran Masters, I live at 36 South Street, right next to the subdivision, and yes, the stone, we moved there in 1985 and loved that it was a historic district, and it's very sad that that's been taken away. It was also pointed out, I don't know if it was in Mr. Carister's letter or Mr. Wilson's, that it's sort of a safety thing, too. It kind of demarcates the subdivision from the bend on South Street and lets you know that that's a different area. And I've found already with that removed that cars are coming straight across South Street and zooming into the subdivision without even seeing that you're not supposed to go straight there. So I would request that for historical reasons, as well as safety issues, that the stone wall be restored. Thank you.
All right, are there any other members of the public wanting to speak before I give Mr. Humphries a chance to comment? Mr. Humphries, I'm going to give you, if I can limit you to two minutes, please, to kind of respond, and then I'm going to open it back up to the board.
Thank you. So one of the abutters, the first one that got up and talked, he said, which was interesting, he said, "Sheet seven of seventeen, you'll show the stone wall on it, and it shows it there, and it's supposed to be rebuilt." If he's saying sheet seven of seventeen, why isn't he talking about the other stone walls that are on the, on the same plan? Seems a little odd that he's not talking about 200 feet away, other stone walls that are on the property that I had to remove to put the road in. He says that they didn't, oh, those don't bother him, but they're only 200 feet away. So this farmer's, farmer's wall that ran all through the subdivision I had to remove to put the road in, but all of a sudden this one out in front, and then he's saying all about the, why did the drainage have to go there? Because that's where it was approved to go, and the town worked with us on that. So I worked with Mr. Swan on this, and where the, where he wanted the drain manhole cover to go. So that's, I'm working with the town, they wanted it there. So it's the town property and my property, so we had to do that to build it. So I'm just going to, I don't want to make this long, but he said that he contacted me a bunch of times and I wouldn't get back to him. He walks into the property all the time, he's walking all over the lots that are under construction. Stephanie and I met with the, the engineer from the town. The rocks that are there on Lot Two are there because they're coming out from all the other lots, and Lot Two is a designated lot we're using to crush the rocks to get them out of there because there's so much rock in the soil. That's why those rocks are there. And I'm not going to stop construction on rocks because one of the neighbors is concerned about the rocks. Construction has to continue so I can get this built in two years like I told the town I would do. So all these things that he's saying, that the pretty pictures, et cetera, like I just had one of the abutters came up, Fran just came up, she doesn't have any stones in front of her property. So why is she so affectionate on these stones that are running through the woods on my property? I had to remove those walls, and then obviously Dale also mentioned, oh, the rocks only stop right at the telephone pole, you put them right up there. The sidewalk goes 25 feet past the telephone pole. If you look in the plan, they go, it goes 25 feet past the telephone pole. There can't be rocks in a public walkway. So he's saying it could be 40 feet past. I just did the math on it, it's 20 feet a wall. So you want me to put up 20 feet of wall? I'll put up 20 feet of rocks that are just piled up if you want, but it just doesn't make sense. I have drainage issues over there also. I have to get the water to drain properly, I can't, I have to fill that property up. So the wall would have, it came up, come out anyway, so now I'm going to have to build up the property and put these rocks up at a higher elevation. I've walked through this with Stephanie before, and the town engineer, and other people on the planning board. I'm not being a tyrant here, it just doesn't work. It's a farmer's wall, it's being completely changed, and if I have to raise the thing two feet out of the ground, it just doesn't make sense. So I'm doing the right thing here, I'm trying to build a subdivision, I'm getting a lot of abutters, a few abutters, three of them, that keep giving me a hard time over this, and I think we're doing a great job. But I, I'm just very frustrated, guys, I, I'm doing everything the right way. He wants these, keeps saying this is a historical wall, it's a farmer's wall. Another gentleman got up there and said, "There's thousands and thousands of feet of it." Yes, there are, they're farmer's walls, they're not historical. You can talk to Ed Hands about it, I have talked to Ed Hands. They're not historical, they're farmer's walls, they're used to separate property lines. Now, the line, nice?
I'm going to ask you just to wrap it up.
If I could just finish, the wall going down along my property line is a beautiful wall that was built by the owner of the property, and that's gorgeous, and it's falling apart, and I'm fixing it. But the other walls are just rocks. But thank you, guys, appreciate it.
All right, thank you for your comments. Board members?
May I have 30 seconds to respond?
I'm going to, I'm just going to end comments now, because I don't think it's going to be productive, the back and forth. So I'm going to throw it out to the board members and see if folks have comments here.
I gave you my observations.
All right, Joanne?
I think, I think, I think it's a difficult, I think it's a difficult issue because, so first and foremost, I think, not having been involved in the initial site plan for this whole development, I feel like this is a discussion that, you know, sounds like had taken place at that time, and I know that, I forgot his last name, I'm sorry, but Mr. Dale pointed out that, stood that chair at the time and mentioned that the stone walls would stay. Stephanie, I don't know if you can clarify more on that, it obviously didn't make it into the paperwork, was that just the chair saying that at the time, do you know, or was there actually like a motion or a condition that had been stated to be included as part of that, that just maybe didn't get in there?
It, it was in fact a statement that was, it was a question that was asked by Mrs. Wilson, a comment that had been made. My recollection is the, the stone walls were talked about probably a couple of times. It wasn't necessarily the primary focus of the discussion. There was a lot of discussion about how the driveway kind of formed a country lane, there were trees, it was a tree-lined driveway, and having the development have that type of look, Mr. Humphries did talk about the fact that he is going to plant trees, and I've had conversations with him multiple times about having some trees along that lined the road from the entrance, not necessarily all the way through the subdivision, but that again, just gives that appearance of a country road. So it, and it, the stone wall requirement didn't make it into the decision, of course. One of the things that Mr. Carister pointed out, and, you know, he, he's correct, that throughout the plans, you see the stone walls still shown even on the proposed plans, but you also see on the proposed conditions plan, the stone wall extending across the road, which of course, the board did not intend for the stone wall to extend across the road.
Oh, sorry, I said, "Thank you, Stephanie." I, I don't know, Amos, you had your hand up.
Oh, no, that was, we had someone cut, did from Town Hall, from, from ECAT, trying to get the visual back up. Can you see us now?
I, yeah, I can see you. Did you hear me?
Yes. Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry for that awkward pause, that was more of an internal thing.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I, I was present on that meeting, and other meetings we have with other development, in which we defended these walls many times. I think we need to recognize that we failed to put that in the decision as a board, so it would have been more clear than just on, on a drawing. But that, that's a drawing I sign, and my signature went to that wall shown on the, on the, on the plan, should have never been taken down. Therefore, my strong opinion is needs to put back. It cannot be put back on the exact same way that was before, it needs to put back in a way in which will reflect the character that that wall gave this corner of this historical neighborhood, and that is my position.
Thank you, Amos.
And there is one other comment I would like to make. I, I believe Mr. Carister referred to it as a, as historical walls, which in, in fact, they are, and Mr. Humphries argued that they weren't historic because they were just farm field walls, but that doesn't mean that they don't have some historic significance to the area.
Thank you, Stephanie.
I have a question.
Yes.
Can we engage in historical preservation and ask the question so it is also supported by the entity in town that deal with these things?
That was going to be my question, but because I'm on that board as well, I didn't know if I could ask that question.
I think we should.
Yeah.
Given the discussion and the request, I think we should reinforce.
Is it possible to re, to refer this?
Well, I, again, Mr. Carister pointed out, and he and I had had this conversation, that it is, it is a change to what the plan showed. So the board is within its jurisdiction to require that the stone wall be rebuilt, and certainly you could consult with the Historical Commission if you felt it necessary to support such a decision.
Would it be appropriate to request that this, that their rebuilding be consulted upon with the Historical Commission to make sure that it is appropriate to the character of kind of what was the?
Supervised.
Yeah, supervised, thank you. It's been a long night, that's the word I was looking for. Or that they can have some kind of supervisory or, or advisory role in kind of the, the rebuilding? There's some pretty smart folks on the Historical Commission with a lot of knowledge about Easton, and I think the type of walls particularly in the area, and it might not be a bad idea to have them working with Mr. Humphries.
So I guess my, my question, just by the way you asked that question, is would you be expecting something more than what was there, or to replace what was there?
Given what folks are talking about tonight, the, the placement of the drainage, I don't believe that you can replace it exactly stone for stone, especially because the stones, I think, are not, not present. So whatever would have to be replaced would not be exact, so the question is, what's an acceptable replacement, I think?
I think it's a good question for the Historical Society to come.
Commission, yeah.
Commission, and say, "This is, this is, that doesn't make sense, we don't want to impose something that doesn't make sense."
Yeah, I think it needs to play.
I think as long as it's consistent with, again, the fact that the stone wall was shown to, in a way that would imply it was intended to be retained, and the, that, you know, we have minutes from a meeting that the chair represented that the board was going to require that it remain. So to the extent that it's about replacing what was there, I think that, that.
So would it be a motion to, motion to request replacement with a referral?
I think first that you'd need to consider that, I think, probably, although this wasn't requested, but the board, I believe, because this has been brought to its attention, can determine that this was a change to the plan that warranted input from the board.
Okay.
You need a motion for that, right?
Do you have a motion?
Yeah, do I have a motion for that?
I want it to vote in there.
I need an actual vote.
We should consider what has been done and changed.
One on the side of the road.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll do a roll call vote, Zigman?
Aye.
Weeks.
Aye.
Katam. Wolf is an aye as well.
Stupid.
All right, so the next would be to, how will we go about this?
We'd probably work, work with Mr. Humphries on how it should be restored. And to what, and to what extent? Because again, it shows that it goes across the road, of course, that's not, no one's going to ask that they do that, but.
Yeah.
It needs a, it needs a plan, because it can't be rebuilt in the same location that it was, it's going to have to do something to get around the stone.
It needs to return the character that that wall gave to that area. It needs to return the character that that wall gave to that area. That is the objective. For that, we need the Historical Commission to help us with that. And I would say that the decision should be for Stephanie to contact them and figure out what...
Okay.
And then, and then work with Mr. Humphrey about what can be done.
And, and again, just, I just want to be clear that it's understood not to require that Mr. Humphrey go above and beyond what was there.
Would it be appropriate to request Mr. Humphreys' comeback with a, with a plan for...
If, if the board's asking for input from the Historical Commission, my thought would be that I work with the community planner, Wayne Beitler, who works in my department, and we work with Mr. Humphrey, and go from there.
Do you need a motion for that, or can we just suggest that?
I think we can just say that that's what we're going to do.
We'll have that in the minutes.
Yeah.
I think we need to reach a logical compromise on the thing, and come back to the board for approval of some plan.
Yeah. And again, we'll start the, kind of the interaction or need to involve the Historical Commission through Wayne.
Yeah. I just want to make sure this is respectful to both the neighbors and the butters, and also to Mr. Humphrey, that we figure out some kind of replacement that works for everyone involved. All right. So we're, I guess, set with this, moving back to 51, 531 Foundry Street, and Bob can come back, because he's been...
You can come back.
Okay. He's been in the corner for a very long time.
He's in the corner. That's it, 23 feet.
All right.
It's from here to that wall. They want me to put up some rocks. I know, it's silly.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Humphreys. We'll see you again.
Thank you. So I just said the measurement on the new historical wall that I'm gonna build that's 21 feet long. Thank you so much, guys. Have a good night.
You're gonna, Mr. Humphreys, you're gonna work with Stephanie and Wayne Beitler, and we're gonna work on next steps. So thank you very much.
You can put a sidewalk on a sidewalk with a stone wall on it or drainage, but 21 feet we'll build. Not a problem. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Humphreys.
Thank you.
Okay.
Welcome back.
Welcome back.
All right.
Could've gone out for, for some food. No, they didn't. Okay. All right. So we're gonna recall the public room that we started on 531 Foundry Street. Gentlemen, please step forward.
Good evening. Gary Barniki, Hammerhead LLC, 531 Foundry. And to my left, Aaron Luca. So he's got his iPad, in case I have to refer to it. My engineer, as I said, was at another meeting, and he parked himself in one of the offices and had Wi-Fi, and he was gonna be able to point to all this on the screen and so forth. And then they were closing the building and they kicked him out. So now he's driving home from wherever he was, and he asked me to present. So that's why I'm gonna refer to anything that we've already submitted on the iPad. So if there's any questions, that's fine. Wasn't sure whether or not you need me to read the brief. It's basically the same as the last one, except it refers to the Phase 2 portion, which, if you remember, we talked about it last time that we were here on the first phase, which was to take the existing home and make it into a two-family. We haven't really started that, but we did have, if, don't know if you've noticed, but the outside of the house has been completely restored and painted with the right tones and flatness of the paint. And, you know, we took the extra time to make sure we got it right. So, and we think it looks great. It's, it's a great starting point. So if there's any questions with regard to any of this, I know some of the questions that we had before was regarding the drainage at the street, not allowing any of this driveway to go into the roadway, which subsequent to our meeting, we had all the stuff worked out. And so now you have all the grades and the arrows pointing to everything on the property stays on the property. And then this highlighted section here in yellow is the proposed three units in the back. And the area that is making it attach to the house is, is an existing deck, which would be a closed-in porch. And then it'll tie in with the porches that we're gonna have on the front of this as well. So it 'll all tie in to the same kind of a farmer's porch they have on the front of the existing homes. We're trying to bring in a lot of the architectural elements to that back piece. Even though you really won't be able to see it from the street, it'll still look nice and be functionable to the people that are gonna be living there. So if there are any questions?
Remind me, what about parking?
Parking. Parking. So along here, there are two spots for each one of the units, and then the existing unit previously discussed, we have the two spots for what we call the barn section, and two spots for the main house.
So it's two spots for each one?
For each one. It's sufficient area for backing out and be able to enter Foundry Street going forward, which is also why we did this little circular section. For anybody that might pull in and have to go back out, they don't have to back out onto Foundry, which is almost impossible.
Circle out.
Yeah.
Question. Is there any accommodation for visitor parking if they have guests and they have two cars?
Yeah, there's, there's area along the side, and there's an area next to the dumpster over here, the proposed dumpster. And I believe that there's still enough room along the side back here for them to be able to back out and turn, and then have guest spots as well.
Yeah, I think that'd be...
They are only a two-bedroom, so...
Yeah, I was just thinking, you know, most condo situations, they have the numbered spaces belonging to the unit, and then some parking, so that when they have people over, there's, you know, not any kind of disorder.
Yeah, there's, there's no doubt, we're gonna have to come back anyway, because the stormwater drainage calculations that were done for this are off at independent review, Cheshire Consultants. And I spoke with them, thinking that we're gonna try to get it done for tonight. There was no chance of that ever happening. So instead of canceling, obviously, there're gonna be some questions that'll come up. If we can answer them, which parking is one that we will for when we come back.
Okay.
Yeah, because there, there is no way they can park on the street here.
Exactly. That's where I was going.
The only option is inside. I mean, there are two of your tenants with people coming in and everything else. Now you, you are adding four or five cars, at least.
So, yeah, I'll make sure that there's an ability. I'm thinking it's probably gonna be along this, this line here, but I'm gonna double-check that. And maybe what we'll do is we'll have it delineated for next time.
I, I have another question there. Given the number of units that you are now have, you have a significant upgrade to electrical and heating and all that.
Right.
What is the plan for this?
We've been in touch with the electric company. The way the power comes into the main building is off to the left over here. And so we've already done the calculations and submitted them, and it's gone from the initial consultation with them to the design. So they're gonna send a design engineer out. My electrician told me, I think it was last week, he got that notification. So we're gonna meet with them. So the plan is to bring in Paul, have him bring enough power to give each one of these units its own meter, as well as enough amperage. And then each one of these units, we've already calculated, would be 100 amp service, I believe. And there'll be enough coming in on the pole and the transformer to handle that. But again, that's up to design.
Underground from the pole back to the units?
Well, you will need an upgrade on the unit, but you also need the electric company to...
That's what they're designing.
Yeah, that's what they're gonna do. They went from initial giving it a work order to setting up the design engineer.
Are we going to heating, do we heating?
Natural gas. Both, you know, heat and air. For heat, natural gas, obviously electric for the, for the air conditioning systems. In individual units for each.
And you have a lot of trees, so solar is not an option here. I can see it from the picture.
Yeah.
Yes.
Stephanie?
So, just, just a couple of questions. I think what they're providing for parking is what is required, and I understand the questions about guest visitors. At, at the same time, we're trying to decrease the amount of impervious area. So it's always kind of a balance there. There was a comment that was just made that I wanted to respond to.
It's a beautiful house.
I don't know whether...
One of, one of the, in looking at the elevations again, and I didn't put this in my staff report, but the gable ends of, it looks like from the plan, the gable ends of the three additional units are what are going to be facing kind of the, but they're totally behind the...
Existing house.
Existing. And, and my only comment is, because they don't have any windows or, you know, architectural features, they're really very plain. So, but, but again, it looks like they're not going to be viewed from the road, so...
But even so, the windows that we'll be using will be grilled similar to the existing house, which I think we're six over six.
I'm talking about the, on the gable ends, you show, the elevations do not show any windows.
Because that's where it connects to the other house.
Right. So that's where one side is, and then the other side is facing the backyard.
Given the parking and the area there, I think lighting, design, and photometric is needed, right? Should be part of your plan.
That's the point. I agree.
And, and we're talking always about dark sky lighting.
Yeah.
Uh, quick question. Building elevations, will the peaks of the condo units be visible from the street, or is the house taller?
The house is taller.
Thank you.
Yeah, but the rock is kind of dumb.
Yeah.
We placed it specifically to, whether it's kind of hidden on both sides.
Yeah, yeah.
For as much as possible. Not that we're trying to hide the unit. We don't want it to take away from the historic value of the house.
And as I said earlier, even though it is not seen from the street, aesthetically, we don't want it to be just a box. So we have the farmer's porch in the front, again, matching the same kind of style and the trim as, as close as we can, coloring and all that.
The farmer's porch is six feet deep. It's not a decorative farmer's porch. It's one designed for people to actually be able to hang out there and, and look out over.
And then each year, it's gonna have its own, you know, own deck in the back.
If I may, like, obviously for the parking, I bet, measuring it out, having lived in and having family members live in areas, with the parking as is, I bet you can fit more cars on the side, for sure. I just need measurements to be sure, but I don't think it would increase the impervious area much if you just kind of, it might be helpful for the board just to see kind of how you can stack the cars up on the side.
Yeah. And so that was one of the notes.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Shortly ago. I'm gonna see if he can actually draw them out so we can make sure that they'll actually fit.
Yeah. You can also just stack a car right behind each spot, having done that in the past. Just block them right in.
And, and then my other comment was, because we had talked about this when they came for the duplex, because Mr. Barniki and Mr. Luca had always indicated they were really seeking to make this a five-unit project, that rather than issuing another special permit for the three units, that the board consider an amended special permit to the initial, an amendment to the initial special permit. And, and that way you have in one document, your, kind of the flow of how it evolved. But that, that's my suggestion.
Okay. Any other questions from board members? Stephanie, when do we expect to hear back from the peer review?
I would expect it probably by the next meeting, which is in two weeks, correct, Suzanne?
Okay. At this time, I'm gonna open up to members of the public. Do they have any comments? Yes, please, just, if you could just step up and state your name and your address.
Hi, Rachel Moore, 541 Foundry. I know I never called back, I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask about the plans for the dumpster. It's been an issue on Foundry Street with some of the other developments of emptying dumpsters late at night from some of the commercial spaces. Also, I'm two doors down, so like, having a big smelly dumpster, just wanted to kind of ask about the plans for like, in closing in and emptying it and all that ones.
The dumpster is as far from your property as it could be on the plan. It's shown in the yellow at the back.
Yeah, it's perpendicular, like, my land is just one over, so it's not, yes, go ahead.
But we can, usually with our residential, they're not doing that two, three in the morning, but we can request it.
Typically with the commercial, we reach out after all, pick these for, and then easier access. But that, I've usually seen dumpsters being done during very limited hours.
I just wanted to make sure if something that was brought up. As I saw the dumpster, it made me nervous. Thank you.
Dale Carister, 21 South Street. I'll be brief, because you were more than patient with me before, and I really appreciate that. I had the opportunity to meet with Mr. Barniki. Thank you for standing, because I didn't know how to pronounce his last name, was referring to him as Gary, and, and Aaron as well, on the property a month or two ago. And feel like this property is in very good hands with him. I was pleased with what he's doing in terms of the maintenance of the front. I was also pleased to see the Historic Commission weigh in, and also noted that, you know, that the townhomes in the back won't be visible from the front. So I think it's consistent with maintaining the historical character in the area. And as this board has heard on numerous occasions, I had to go through multiple housing situations through a number of years while going through a divorce. I liked the idea of having this additional diversity of housing that we have in the area, and I think it contributes to the village area. So I'm very much in favor of, of the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. So Stephanie, do we, I mean, I guess theoretically, we could close the public hearing, or do we have to leave it open until we get the peer review?
I would leave it open in, in case we get some comments that require changes to the plan. I mean, you're moving, have you already finished the conversion of, so they're still working on the conversion of the existing, and I don't think this is going to hold it up significantly.
No, Suzanne and I were speaking about the logistics of actually coming back on the very next meeting. I think as long as we get our input back from the consulting company, then once we get that information, giving, given Peter a chance to either look into it or whatever he's gotta do, we're okay with the next one after that, which I think was in-person, October 8th.
Right. And I, I mean, I, I think this is, this is not a large site. It's not a big project. So I think the stormwater should be pretty straight.
What is the status with your drawings? You cannot complete until you have all the information and everything else. We need those, right?
What drawings are they?
Drawings. The, the design, the plans.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Yes.
The drawings of the buildings?
Showing, I think what, if I may, I think what Amos is referring to is what do you storm, the details of the stormwater structures that you're proposing.
Yeah, and the photometric plan, and, and the landscape and all, all that needs to be somewhere, so we can take a look at it.
All right. So do I have, unless you have further questions?
I, I have two. If you wanna ask them to continue to the next meeting, if we need to, we can always continue that without coming in. We can request a continuance. That way, if we're ready, the next one, we can...
Actually, not a bad idea. If the consulting comes back and says that all of the calculations are correct, we have now for the next couple of weeks to take care of the stuff that we have on our list and have it ready. And we'd be fine with that.
Second question. Would it make sense, and if you can, for the board to vote now, whether they'll accept this as amendments to the previous special permit application?
No. No, that's, that's the vote that the board will be making. That will be the final.
Okay, I didn't know if we should mark the plans as amendment plans.
No, you don't, you won't.
Okay. Go ahead.
All right. I will accept the motion.
Motion to continue 531 Foundry Street.
Motion to continue 531 Foundry Street to September 30th, September?
Yep.
Next one?
Yeah, September 30th. Wolf?
Second.
Zigman?
Any further discussion? Hearing none? Kedham?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. See you guys in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on. Now we have our zoning amendments. And do we have to be read in on this one, Stephanie?
Yes, this is the opening of the public hearing, correct?
Do we have a...
Oh, okay. So we're still discussing.
Okay, we have to, we do, Suzanne said we have to vote on adding the definitions of the family to the zoning amendments. To hold a public hearing on that, yes.
Didn't, at the last, correct me if I'm wrong, at the last meeting, didn't we vote?
We voted against.
All right.
So this, this, this was brought up because as part of the accessory dwelling units, it talks about, two things occurred. So we did receive approval from the Attorney General's office on the MBTA zoning, which I think I failed to send out to all of you.
Okay.
Letting you know that, that it's still, we're still waiting for Housing and Livable Communities to finish their compliance review. I did reach out, and they did tell me that they are working on it, and we should expect to hear soon. That was two weeks ago. I was hoping we'd hear very soon. But going back to the Attorney General's office, what they did comment on was our definition of the single, of family. And it was actually truncated in, from the 2015 version of the zoning bylaw to the 2016, which was the rewrite. And in the rewrite, it left off a reference to any household that had five or more people in it that were unrelated was not to be considered a family. And fair housing laws require that you not discriminate against family residents in housing, in housing. So we are going, we're proposing changing the definition there. So I added it for that, plus it works in with the ADU.
With the ADUs.
Yeah, that's, that makes perfect sense. So wait, so just so I have the, the timeline then. So tonight, are we actually voting to hold public hearings on all of them, including, because I thought we did the...
No, the board already voted on the, the first four, right?
Okay. So, so we're just voting on the family definition, and then we'll publish the hearing notice tomorrow, and then we'll actually open the public hearings on October 8th? That's...
Yep.
All right. Okay, so this will be a lot shorter and easier than I anticipated.
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do we have any questions about the family definition?
I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I, I tend to agree.
I can actually go through and find it, but I was looking for it as, as I was talking and...
More or less lawyers.
So then, do I have a motion?
Can I motion? What am I supposed to motion?
Motion to hold a public hearing on...
Okay. Do we, can, motion to hold a public hearing on, and then list them all?
No, just 235, 60 definitions.
Just 235 dash 60 definitions, family. Wolf?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none? Kedham?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Weeks?
Aye.
Zigman?
Aye.
And Stetsons and I as well. Okay. Then I guess that brings us to meeting minutes. I wasn't here last time.
So I would just ask that the board, between now and the next meeting, go through what we're proposing. Amos, you will recognize the solar?
You didn't get the last one.
I didn't get... So I was on vacation last week, and that's when that came in. I did, I had this all put together last Monday before I was out of pocket. So I didn't get a chance to incorporate that back in.
I copy you and Bob also. But we met with Alan, and we resolved most of the issues of that, on that solar revision.
So I, my plan was, and I didn't have a chance to do it this morning, my plan was to go in, take a look at what you sent me, and figure out if, where, or if this needs to be changed or if I have questions for you. And we need to spend a few more...
Appendix A and B tables is where we have more or less...
Question marks.
The questions.
Okay, okay.
So on the tables of use, there are some yeses with a question mark.
Okay.
Saying that maybe it shouldn't be yes.
Okay.
Okay? And on the dimensional table, based on the change we made, it's mostly about the size of lots, setbacks for medium and large.
Yep.
That I, it needs to be discussed because I put there what is my consultation with a solar expert.
Yes, yes, yep.
With the, the guy is really to help me with this. So I welcome, he's an expert on designing solar systems. So I picked up those numbers kind on the conversation, but it's open to us to decide on those numbers. And I need to bring the conversation to the board, besides Alan, because we...
Yeah. Well, the good news is we've got public hearings coming up, so it's gonna be a really good time to, to vet all this and to get some community input.
Yeah.
So this is perfect, you know, and thank you for doing all the hard, the heavy lifting on this.
It's about, it's, it's about the setbacks, the boundary around a solar system, especially ground-mounted large and medium. What is the key issue? And also, a ground-mounted relatively medium and large on residential. But this, but you sent me the decision to the court. And whatever we do with this, we need to go to counsel because the state protects solar systems, and we cannot put on a, on a, on the bylaws anything that coming...
Would restrict...
Contention with, with the state law.
Yeah, I mean, my, my sense of it is that you, you need to have a, a reasonable amount of your municipality that allows it.
Yeah.
You know, whether that's consistent with the language of the statute, that's how the courts have been interpreting.
When you sent me Walpole make a decision to deny, I was reversed by the, by the court.
That's right. Well, right, and just to be clear, just to kind of fill people in at home, in Walpole and in Walfam, which was the original Tracer Lane, they only allowed like 1% to 3% of the land area in their, in their towns to have the large-scale solar.
We, we have an...
And the court, and so I, and that's what I, I just wanted to point out to you in that, the cases, it's that when there is an extremely low amount, that's when the courts have stepped in and said, you guys haven't done enough. And I, you know, I'm, I'm hopeful that we're gonna be fine by now.
I was very cognizant of, of the imposing limitations.
Good. Well, I look forward to hearing more about it. All right, so the last item on tonight's agenda is meeting minutes.
Motion to approve the meeting minutes of August 26, 2024. Wolf?
Second. Weeks?
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none? Kedham?